Well, call the meeting to order, roll call.
Mary Westergaard.
Yep.
Holtman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hus. Stankin.
On the public forum, we have some interested citizens who would like to speak about a street. That's us. Whoever, come on up so we can hear you.
We're told to stand.
You gotta tell us who you are, what you're here for.
I'm Carolyn Church. I live on Lake Shore Drive, and that's what we're here about, to get that street fixed. It hasn't been redone since I never knew when it got there.
She's lived there 30 years, and she says it's never had any.
It's been patched here and there, and it's really in need of being fixed.
And we're hoping that's on the agenda. And also, all the water from Lake Street, half of Lake Street comes around the corner and goes down that half-street by her, between her storage unit and Linda, whatever her name is.
Olson.
Olson. And she comes, and it comes down, instead of going to those drains down there, it comes between us, between her garage and my cement parking, and it's just like a river when it rains. I've had water in my basement twice, so we're hoping somehow a drain can be put somewhere that will catch some of that.
Either fix the street shape, so that the water's directed to the gutters drains.
What's your guys' address?
When?
What's your address again?
106 Lake Shore Drive.
And I'm Darlene Ankenon, 102 Lake Shore Drive. And I've had water in my basement twice, which happens, I guess.
This spring.
This spring. And I think it's just from all the water coming down. So we really request that our street gets some attention this year or soon.
Well, like I said, we plan on doing a street project next year because we only have so much money. And we've talked about it just recently, about grinding that, milling it down and putting two inches of blacktop. And, well, I guess we'll have to, can we put a drain there, Lon, would that help?
Well, there's no storm drain there, I mean, unless you bring it all the way up from where we're working now. Out on Lake Street, there's no storm drain until you get all the way down to the tile plant. A drain's probably two and a half blocks.
It says water, there's a thing that says water up there, but that's just water.
That is a two-inch valve, and that has to be dug up before that street can be put in. Now, when we do that, we could address that part of the street and maybe ramp it up there and then bring it back down, so all that's draining, you don't get anything off of Lake Street, basically.
That would even help, you know, if we don't get all that watered out.
Yeah. And then the rest of the water's supposed to go down to the storm drains we're working with. And, of course, there's quite a dip right by your house.
Yeah, right out in front of you.
I have a lake all the time.
Yeah. You can see that, yeah. And it's getting pretty alligatored right in there, too, now, so. But, you know, we're doing some infrastructure down there right now, and we hope that'll take care of Van Kirk, because Max Van Kirk, really, most of the water runs into his drain, not the city drain. But I think what we're gonna try and do is do a little more, take the street out where we're working right now, maybe go another 15-foot on each side of the drains, and lower the street right there, so that when, if, when and if they do another project, that part of it'll be done, will be concrete, and then we could take and mill it down to the, two inches below the new concrete, and then get a taper so it runs down the middle. And I think they can do that, but, I mean, I'm not pouring a lot of blacktop, so. There's quite a base there, it's a foot and a half thick. It's been raised up and raised up and raised up, so.
Can you just mill it out?
Um, I think you could, Gus, and then they come back in and lay it to a taper. But I'd have to talk to a blacktop guy, because it ain't very wide, and what, if they came in with a six-foot machine, you know, then they could tip it. But I don't know, the big machine, if they can contour it or not. I really don't know.
Well, we do the, we're talking about that this one when we do budget, and we do a, see what we got for street funds, but I would certainly, we'll inform you when we have that meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we were just hoping somebody could figure something out.
But I know we gotta fix that shut-off up there. If we wanna fix them before we ever do any work, otherwise we'll just tear the damn thing back up again. We've heard you, and we appreciate you coming up.
We appreciate your time.
Let you all know what we're thinking.
We've heard about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, consent agenda. The additions are another building permit.
Yes, one additional building permit, this is the one to Thirsty Car. It is actually, they described it as a, as an awning, but it's more of a lean-to type of a structure, it's an actual structure.
But it's been approved by Daryl?
Yeah, Daryl has approved this, too.
Okay, do you have a motion on the consent agenda? So move second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Holtman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, Bill, you wanna talk about the underground project?
On page five, it starts. And it's gotta get down July 28th, it's 18th, in the second sentence.
This is set in June, July, but what's that?
It says July.
Do you have the 28th? It says 18th.
Oh, it's supposed to be 18th?
It's supposed to be the 18th, Scott.
I see.
That's the Friday before the council meeting.
All right.
And then your, your, your opening day, I mean, the council meeting's on the 21st. And Lon wants some, uh, bore in the water line out of John Drilling's, and I estimated that like 720. And then I drove by the Speaker Park Open Shelter House, that has an overhead wire on it, and I'd like to bury that also, add it on there, and that'll add another 652 on that total. Does everybody know where the sites are, or am, like, highlighted it on the map?
Can you just go through that, though?
On page nine.
Like on page seven?
Seven, let's, oh.
Is that Quirk?
Right, the urban area starts up behind Aaron, Aaron Brotherton's, goes down to where Charlie Ferguson used to live, then back north to Terry Reese's transformer, south to the Lutheran church, east to where Carlotta Brown lives, it's right across High Street here. And the yellow highlight on Main Street are, those are overhead streetlight wires. And the next area would be at the tile plant, the east transform, east side of their, of their building, it goes out, feeds the parking for the boat ramp there, then also feeds the aeration and the siren out of Ice House Point. Square number 50, that's John Drilling. Scott, you cut me off.
Yep. 52 is Dixieland.
52 is Dixieland. It's going across Dixieland to Mrs. Clausen's bait old house, and re-burying, we didn't do two transformers out there, the north, north two transformers. And Jerry's got, it's easier to see with those pictures right there, on page 52. Page 16. Excuse my page number. It's got, the pootages are how far the bores would be. It's basically doing what we've always done, replacing existing underground, open central wire with jack bit. Then page 17 is the rural line. In our five, Quirk Farms are putting in a, a new service out there across the highway, quick to bore the highway, they're, um, putting a huge bin out there, and it's a, it's a big grain operation. And if we, our seven would be easier if we went back to the other pages. On page 19, I'll start at the far west, that 290-foot, that existing line is overhead, but the main feeder line there has been underground since 1988. And the poles are bad, instead of replacing the poles, it'd make more sense just to hook up to that underground. The first farm is Danny Meister, that's 290-foot. The next farm is John, where John Healy lives, and the last one is the, Kurt Dutzman, it's a bin site out there. And then, then you, that overhead line you guys see out there would be just eliminated. I don't know why they didn't do that when they buried that out, but that was before On page 20, the last page, Scott, I added up those numbers, I still can't get that to add up, so I don't know what's going on there, but Scott put a deal together, what Shun, what he charges last fall, what would be this fall, this summer.
And, um... Just, just, as Bill had his numbers on pulling cable, that's three wires for each one, so, yes, roughly say three times that much.
I've got the number here, Scott.
On pulling cable, but what?
14,372.
That was...
But that's gonna be added, because we added that water line, and then the shell, Open Shelter House and Speaker Park, so 15,000 bucks, my, for pulling wire.
Additional to this?
Uh, about $6,000 more.
Well, yeah, minus the 83, you know.
It, uh, we had, had looked at this, and Bill kind of come up with a project somewhat based upon what we had budgeted for funds. We have $80,000 budgeted for contractors to come into town and replace underground, so that's, kind of the number he's shooting at as he's preparing this, and it stays under that number.
It, it started out with jobs that we had to get done, and like, we talked, and the more I thought about it, it would make more sense to just do it all at one time, about the farmers and John Drilling's drop, where we have to get power in. And so I thought we just, we'll do it on the whole project, and...
As we, as we looked at this and looked at those contractors, you can look at those, those quotes, the top part of the page, that's the actual bids that we got last year for last year's project. We, we had four bids on that. Bill had talked with Shun about, about this year's project and used them for estimating costs again. And, and Shun says, "Well, we would, we would honor our price from last year." And I talked to Aaron about that, about the bidding and quoting requirements, and there's a requirement for competitive quoting if the project's more than $50,000, and Aaron recommended that we would take competitive quotes again.
Did you know that's pronounced Shon versus Shun?
I guess I've heard it both ways. Shon.
But Bill, the explanation here is we're, we're putting, we're actually pulling conduit, basically, underground, so the next time we can just pull new wire.
Right, what, the councils, I can't remember how many councils it's been, quite a while, the council agreed that they wanted to put in conduit with every one of the wires, so if something goes bad, you just pull the new in.
Right.
Our problem is there's nowhere to go anymore, and if you go deeper, you can't get up, and you hit rocks, and... The one thing I, we did talk about this morning is, if you're gonna go out for bids on this, you better move that, where are our completion dates, you better make that September first.
Because we have to have room for the corn bin.
The two farmers, yeah. And that only leaves, you know, we're here July, it only leaves August, from March. Leroy said he'd do it in July, he'd be hiring him.
But we're required by law to take bids.
It's whatever you gotta do. That, but that's one recommendation I'd do, is I wouldn't go October first, because that doesn't give us time to get those transformers in.
Any questions for Bill?
John, also on those bids, there's six transformer sleeves and one sectionalizer to set, and that adds, well, I'm just estimating 400 a box, $2,800. But like I said, you won't know until you get the prices in, so. And I realize that you're only looking at a month and two weeks of bidding, so you'll be dealing with that. You know, you don't know until you get it in, I'll put it that way.
Any chance, Aaron, that we could look at this as a, as a, an urban project and a rural project, and make that into two projects? Each one being under $50,000, so.
Well, I don't know, I'd have to look at it, I mean, you asked me the question once.
I know, because I just thought about that now, but, because otherwise, yeah, it'd be one project, and we should, we should quote it, but, um, there's some merit to, having Shun do this, because they'd be ready to go, they want to do it during July. And one of the projects is John Drilling, he's very interested in...
Can you divide it into rural versus urban?
We can write up two contracts that way, sure.
Leroy brought that up, I didn't even bring it up to him, so, I mean, he just offered it, so.
Leroy.
He's the owner, Leroy should show him.
Okay.
It's right by my pocket, a couple of years.
Be the way to get around it. Keeps it in.
Well, yeah, the other thing is that you look at those bids, I mean, you can see what the other bids were.
Another job, if the council knows it's coming up, is that 196 intersection out here, they're straightening that road, they're widening the road to 100-foot on each side of the right-of-way. We have to have that moved next spring, so, kind of wait off for that, because we don't know where, where to even go yet. They don't even have it surveyed. They started, they started up at Old Highway 20, and they're working south, so. But that's another job, that's not that big of a job, though, unless they make me, I might have to bury all of Mark's drop, going to Mark Hostings' house, because I think they're moving his driveway to the south, and Bill Acorn, too, yeah.
Bill's, too?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, the top of here.
Hell, what?
They don't, yeah, because they're, they're cutting that white, and...
Well, they're gonna cut the hill long way.
Yeah, and then they're gonna, from where, I don't know which blessing it was, but they're widening that all the way back to his grove.
Marvin.
Marvin, on the north side and the south side of the road.
That's a good hill to go airborne with, Wes. Don't get bought.
Don't tell me you've done that, too. When workers were out there, you didn't want to be out there. That was a busy road.
So, Aaron, you think that would be if we had a, we approved a rural bid, or a rural project and the city project, we could just turn around, just hire Shun?
Yeah, that sounds like a possibility.
He does actually work for the towns, I mean, I have no complaints, we've worked for them for, he's worked for Lakeview before I started, so, I mean, it's...
I don't think that's the issue, I mean, as far as...
Yeah, you just want to do the bid part, yeah.
So we're above board for doing it that way?
Yeah, I'll double-check with Scott on that, dividing which part's gonna be urban and which is gonna be, I mean, I understand that the country will be the, yeah, I think that would work, two different contracts.
But the sooner we do this, the sooner we can get him down here, get Drilling's done, so we can get that done.
Right, because if you don't get them done before, like I said, September, they're gonna be outside.
They're gonna be gone, you guys, is what's gonna happen, so. And they are, they are big customers, so.
Love sharing.
Scott, did you want to just wait up, hold off on that 196 project, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we know enough about it.
I don't even know how to stake it, so.
So would it be fair to say we could have a motion to award Shun to have him do the rural project, and another motion?
After we divide the two?
Divide the two, first, first people. And that should both be under $50,000, right?
Yes.
I don't think that's a problem, but we need to move along so we can get this done?
I think I got them.
So this work is relatively the same amount of work we had last year, feet-wise and stuff like that, that's comparable, that we're not getting less, we're getting about the same or more, okay? I don't have a problem with that.
I just, like, you're using that map, I get it, we just took that map, and where we stopped, I just had it on, and we're just staying ahead of the outages we're trying to do. And this is gonna, it's gonna, this is gonna go for years.
We have a motion to have Shun do both projects, the rural and the...
I was gonna bring that up, do you want to talk about that, Scott?
What's that?
Rural line, the rest of the rural line?
No, we'll shock them later.
Okay, we'll shock it later.
Help me spend it. So what we need is...
I'll make a motion that we approve Shon construction.
For the rural and the city.
For the rural and the city, separate contracts, as discussed.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Holtman.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, should make some of them happy.
I've got, I've got all that itemized, too, on each job. Basically, you go by your map, and I just added it all up in this right here. Okay.
Ms. Wendy.
Sounds, sounds good.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, the GPS unit we've looked at for a year and a half.
We've looked at the GPS unit for a little while. We can just start on page 23. Know that we looked at another unit, and that's on 21 and 22, but this unit that we're gonna propose is on page 23, and that's just, that shows you the breakdown cost for, for the unit. And as you look at, at this, I can give you a good picture, a good picture of the entire thing together, but it's a two-part, two-part deal, because on page 20, 24, you look at the handheld part, and then on page, like on page 28, that's, that's actually the receiver part, and the handheld and the receiver part, they, they communicate between each other using a Wi-Fi hotspot. So what this does is, you know, it's a GPS unit, allows us to take GPS points, be able to upload that into a mapping system, and then also allows us to be able to go back out and find points. So say we go out and, and locate a curb stop, Lon has, went out there and located the thing, we know exactly where it's at. What we would do is go out there and we would locate it, probably even snap a picture at the same time, and you're gonna tag that to the location so that you can see exactly where it's at. But then it'll have the coordinates, of course, and you gotta go out there the next time, shut it off, you can punch that coordinate into the unit, and it'll walk you right there. And it is a centimeter-grade unit, so it gets everything down to one centimeter.
He demonstrated out front here, and we found a crack in the sidewalk, went back over and punched in, and walked right back to it, so. It's something that, at least we're not gonna saddle the next guys coming up with stuff they can't find. So we budgeted...
What was our budgeted total that we budgeted?
Yeah, well, we were looking at, off the original, and it was 16, and we're at 13, yeah.
And we're gonna use lost funds to pay for it, so.
Yes.
And we have to GPS all the poles in the country if we ever want FEMA to pay us again. If you don't have a GPS location, and a storm comes, you know, lights them up?
Can't see them.
FEMA said if, if there's a storm, if you don't have a GPS location on your lucky poles, they won't pay us.
Sounds like our government.
Yeah.
So, make a motion that we accept the bid, accept that money budgeted.
I'll second it.
Get it going.
Roll call.
Okay, Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yep.
Hus.
Okay, we're on to our property leases, which we've had in the past.
Yeah, just, yeah, we've done these in the past, and, again, the, if you look on page 31, that's for Judases and Schleps, this is the property that, that was, is proposed to be leased, it's the highlighted area. I think it's about 10 feet wide, and the city, all of the city dump property is directly adjacent to that, to the south. We had leased this to them, and basically, the lease just says that in, in exchange for them taking care of the property, they can utilize the property. And we would propose to have the same lease again. Now, I would ask the council this, I've included a lease in here that is a three-year lease. Originally, the, the lease was for five years, but the, just to break off, being that if you lease any land for more than three years, you gotta have a public hearing in order to enter into a longer-term lease. So if we just want to set the date for a public hearing, we could have a longer-term lease, or we can accept a three-year lease now.
I make a motion to accept a three-year lease.
I'll second it.
For both properties?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay, Holtman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hus.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, you want to talk about selling that property?
Yeah. Let's take a look at, just so everybody knows where it's at, this picture's on page 36. Can you kind of envision where that's at, that's pretty close-up? But at the bottom, the bottom of the picture, where the last number's in that, in that runner, number 0032, that's the DNR maintenance shed. Okay, so this property's a little bit north of the DNR maintenance shed on South Blossom Street. Okay? The building, the house to the north of the blue is Barry Booth's house, so his property abuts this. Okay? Right, there on the east side of this, we do have a transformer, and we need to make sure that we would retain access to that transformer through, we need a utility easement for it to be there, need an access easement in order to get to it. With that, though, would, would the council entertain selling that part, that property?
It'd be that much less to more.
We, we haven't mowed it for a while, you know, the neighbors have always taken care of it. We had one of this lease agreements with lease, Lois Peters, when, when she had lived there, and, yeah, we haven't, we haven't been taking care of it, but, yeah. I guess the first thing is, would you entertain selling it? And then, second thing would be to discuss process.
Well, it's of no use to us.
Not really. It was a water well at one time, that's where one of our water wells was, and it's since been capped, and that occurred, I'm gonna tell you, 2005 or '06, so it's been several years, no problems there. It actually is okay, too, we don't use it for anything anymore.
Why was it capped?
Well, didn't produce much anything anymore, so.
It had, it had pipe, too, and there were a half of a new casing in, had a hole in the casing, it was sucking air.
I see no reason for us to keep it.
No.
What I'd suggest to you, then, is that if we do that, we would take bids on the property. You can't sell property for anything other than market value. And then it becomes determining what a market value is, and if you take bids, you at least know that you've determined what the market value is.
So do you have realtor assess it, or sort of, you just take bids?
You just take bids.
Put it in paper?
Yeah, but it's a unique deal, because, of course, it only benefits one person. So if, I'd also like us to consider setting a minimum on that, and the only other example that we would have of where we've done this is Fourth Street down by Speaker Park, Fourth Street did have a very wide right-of-way. And if you think about it, a lot of those houses, I have a Drilling's house, is set way back, and it's because they had this real wide right-of-way. Now, and this, even prior to my time, the, the city went ahead and sold that extra wide right-of-way, and the price for that was $300, so I'd consider, you know, putting this up for bid with a minimum of $300.
Wasn't that like 10 feet, something like that? I remember doing, I remember doing it, but...
I'm gonna tell you, it's even wider than that.
Yeah, it was pretty inside.
Do we have to bring an abstract up to date or something, is that cost, just...
I suppose, homeowner.
An abstract would cost you more than $300.
Yeah.
I would just suggest that if, if there's any cost associated with the sale, it goes to the purchaser.
Yeah.
They'll tell you if they want a warrants deed or a quit因 deed.
Oh, okay.
So $300 plus any costs to transfer.
A quit因 deed, they don't have to do that, probably.
Correct.
So we need a motion to put that on for sealed bids?
Well, what we'd be doing is, yeah, to set it for sealed bids, but be setting a date for a public hearing on the proposed sale, and that date would be August 4th.
And then also, at that time, would we have a proposed easement?
Yes.
So...
Yep, we'd, we'd run that through. We'll have the easement ready to go before we, before we advertise property for sale, that'll just be part of the deal.
I'll make this the...
I'll put that in there, square footage, because it was, of course, a real odd-shaped.
I think you'll have our time to check.
3,600 square feet.
We just need a motion to set public hearing?
Yeah.
For what, August?
Yeah, it'd be August 4th.
Is there a motion to, other, public hearing, August?
I'll make that motion.
That's what I'd like to do, is at least start this way, and then once we get started, we'll have these, like the Legion and Parks people, they would come up and if they want to do something different. But if we could just get the Gilrenzi money to do, we'll apply for that to see if they do that.
Like, if the people that are so against moving Black Hawk, Chief Black Hawk, if they've seen what we is doing with this, wouldn't, don't you think it'd be a little...
Well, they might, but I just thought I would touch a lot of hot wires by not...
Wow.
And this company, I talked to them today, and that's what they do. They make duplicates of these and for far less than what the...
It'd be nice if we could move, you know, I know, Joe, and I talked about that, he's way out there.
Right.
You know, more people would, you know, see and...
I just thought this, it would, wouldn't be so upsetting to some people to...
I know.
But he's, he's like winning the gold medal, putting it in your trunk and telling somebody you got it. We've got to continue to work for, you know, all these projects that we've done over the years all started with one little thing.
Yeah.
And Lon still wants to put lights by the benches around pier to pier. I mean, there's, that's how these ideas always start, somewhere, somebody's come up, and it wasn't my idea to do this stuff, I mean, I've had people come up and say, we have no Veterans Memorial. Isn't there a guy that was killed from here in Vietnam? I don't know. Nobody seems to know. We don't do anything for...
I know there's some from Wall Lake.
Yeah.
I don't know about Lakeview.
But if we take what we got down there, that way we'd leave the water fountain alone, and then we put a sidewalk over by the, over to where the playground's at, it wouldn't interfere with looking at the lake from there. And I didn't want to put a cannon or a tank there because everybody's got that. And we got so much stuff at the park, we don't want to take away from that, we want just a nice, simple Veterans Memorial and that cool little light in the middle.
That was neat, where, that's the, that's the light shining up out of these...
Yeah, yeah. He said he'd do better if we ever got past stage one, but, but I want to do those stone benches like it's at the top of the west pier because it matches the stone piers that we have, it's the WPA stuff. And those benches will be here long after we're all dead. They're not going to get vandalized. But I think a nice information thing for the chief, and if, you know, if we have to make a duplicate, it sounds like it's really inexpensive to do that, it's not a big deal. But, but we'd have a Veterans Memorial, they'd be the same size circles on each side of the road, it would just be another way to, I just, White East's favorite saying is if we do nothing, we go backwards. Everybody here has been to a county meeting, those guys can't pour a sidewalk five feet long and look what happens here. We have a reason to, to do things, to make things, and, and I know change is tough, but, and I know it irritates a few people, not everybody's involved, but if we get Gilrenzi money, that would be a start. But if we don't get that, at least we can continue with some of our extra TIF money, that nobody's taxes would be overburdened, we wouldn't be using that, so. So, what I'm looking for tonight is a motion to just apply for the Gilrenzi grant to start the process.
Your deadline is like four days away.
Yeah, we got to, yeah.
So, you got to do something.
We got to do something, and, and we're going to apply for Gilrenzi to tear down the old bathhouse anyway, so. And we may not get it, but I, I just think it's a, it's a project that's, it's good for the veterans and good for the town.
I'll make a motion, we proceed with it.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
So, does that, proceed with, with the project and the application?
And what about cost estimates?
We don't know yet, everything, well, there's fifteen thousand to do the cement and the dirtwork so far.
Okay, and then after that, we'll get some solid cost estimates.
We haven't got that far because we don't know how far we're going to get. Lon's working on some stuff.
Okay.
By the time we get that far down the road, you know...
A lot of it will be in-house anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the electrical stuff, we can do that.
I'll have to contract it, probably.
Yeah, and if, if we have to get it done a certain timeline, we may have to contract it out, because I know Lon's got his hands full. I, I wouldn't want to sit there and go, Lon can work it in, because...
Ain't going to happen.
We haven't even got my sidewalk done down here, but I haven't said a word about that.
Okay.
And he knows.
God knows you wouldn't want to upset him.
I wouldn't want to upset Lon.
No, heck, no.
Ready for roll call?
Okay, sure. Hus.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, now our budget guy for MISO.
Well, this is, this is not, not directly MISO-related, we need to do this irregardless of MISO.
Thank you.
You bet, thanks.
Thank you.
First, on the, on the MISO thing, about wanting any additional security, when I talked with you last time, I just finished talking with the staff, and we were kind of at, at odds, and I wanted to talk with their, with this guy supervisor, and he was, and supervisor was going to call me. Never heard anything more from them, haven't even heard from them at all since that point. And I haven't called them, you know, we're just kind of waiting for them then. But, so that's kind of where we're at on that, really no resolution to the issue with MISO. But, irregardless of that, we need to do some fiscal year-end, it's either an examination or an audit. Now, it always used to be that towns the size of Lakeview had to have an audit once every four years. Okay, and the other three years, you had nothing. Now, a couple of years ago, law changed to where cities our size do have to have at least an annual, what they call an annual exam. And it's coming in to check for a lot of compliance issues, it is not an financial audit, it does not come in and, you know, check through, through all of your finances and know that those are in order, and check through all of the supporting documentation for the finances. It comes in and, and checks for certain things that the state wants compliance with. Okay, so that's a, that's a requirement that we will have to do. We always can, can have the option of having greater scrutiny and going through more of an audit, and that's what I've asked them for. So, Feldman has given us quotes to, to do several different types of things. This starts off with the least level of scrutiny, and this is that examination that she calls it, an agreed-upon procedure engagement. And that'd be thirty-four hundred dollars to have them come complete this state mandated examination. Okay? But I also asked her for, for estimates to do a financial audit, just like we had done in the past, and then also for a financial audit with some additional information that would supplement for MISO. And that is, we would, we would be able to create a, an electrical balance sheet, and at least be able to provide that to MISO. It would not be prepared in accordance with these GAAP proceedings, generally accepted accounting principles. It would, it would not be prepared in that regard, but it would be a balance sheet that is examined by the audit. Okay? So, I mean, there's a chance we go through this process and say, and MISO's still going to come back and say, it's not an audited balance sheet, you don't meet our requirements. When it gets right down to it, though, I'm going to suggest to you that, that we ought to do an audit, and we ought to have them do this additional work to create an electrical balance sheet. So, looking at those costs, the audit is sixty-eight hundred dollars, it's very consistent with what, what it has been last year. And then it's an additional thousand dollars to create this electrical balance sheet. And I guess I would like to see that. I know it's additional funds, and I don't know that we would do this every year, but...
Did we budget anything for it?
We budgeted five thousand dollars for the exam, so.
So, we're going to be about three thousand short?
Yeah.
Is this something that we want to, lack of a better term, put out for bids, see if there's other accounting firms that would do something on this?
Yeah, but, but we haven't done that for a while. You know, Feldman's done our, done our auditing for us, and we've not been able...
I think, I don't know, I think we should do diligence, see if, see where we're at, what, what is, is this something we, when do we have to have this done by?
Reports are due by like December, we have time.
Wouldn't hurt, you know, I guess, but...
You could do some checking, see if we could find some others that were interested?
Oh, sure, there'll be some interested.
I'd say we just need to find out and see where we're at, like I said, because we don't have enough budget for the first place to do this, and this is something that's going to come up every year.
Keeps it honest.
Yep, the dollar's up pretty fast.
Do you have a, a level of scrutiny that you would look at?
Well...
Based on your recommendation, my guess...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
I mean, who are you comfortable with doing this? Half the battle.
Well, I mean, we can work with any auditor.
But you're saying what level you want to go up?
Yeah, do you want an audit or do you want an exam?
Well, you know, we're due for...
You might have to do the audit, the guy...
Well, if we can do the audits, and if we do the audit and see what's, if MISO accepts it, then we've got that on hand. I think we should do that the first year. If that saves us thirty grand down the line, maybe it will, maybe it won't, but we won't know for, until we try it. If we don't do nothing, whatever, it's going to cost us that money no matter what then.
Yeah.
I'd say for one year, try to see what the, that way we're apples to apples, and try to get possible bids on the first year doing it this way with the electrical, then also see what kind of bid in the future that would be doing the lesser of the audit, so. And I'd say, try to get two or more bids, have a total of three bids, that'd give you a pretty good feel of what's going on.
Are you very comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Probably with your diligence, I'm...
Good. Make your report.
Oh.
The next thing is, not on the agenda, but Dave's got some information from the landfill, but I wanted to make sure that Marshall was still here while the information was out.
Just two things of, that are pretty important in my mind, I guess, and one, one has to regard, regards to recycling. We haven't been recycling glass, but I've come to find out at our last meeting that the state mandates that you recycle glass. So, we just reached an agreement with Carroll, you know, after the Howard Center closed, before I was on the board, they did a contract with Carroll Landfill to do all the recycling. We just renewed that, and it does include glass jars and bottles, I'll just read that part, and then I, Marshall, I don't know if you've seen that, or...
It says, it reads about that already.
Okay. All food and beverage jars and bottles, including all colors of glass, example, soft drink, juice, beer, wine bottles, spaghetti sauce, baby food, pickle and mayonnaise jars, empty and rinsed jars and bottles, lids and labels are okay, food and beverage containers only. No mirrors, window glass, drinking glass, plates, pottery, ceramics, or light bulbs are not recyclable. So, just clear that up. So, all the recyclables, you know, just go into your recyclable container, and they sort it out down there in Carroll, just like they used to. So, I don't know if you want to put that on the newsletter or something, or website. The other thing that we're working on, trying to find out the cost-effectiveness, is just becoming a transfer station versus a full-scale landfill, because in the year after next, we will be looking at the costs of closing up a cell and opening a new one, which is very, very costly. There's a lot of merit, and a lot of cities are doing this where they just become a transfer station where we just haul it to another site. And the site we're looking at is Carroll, and possibly doing that. So, just to give you an FYI on that, that that's something...
It's going to hurt us.
Right.
I can't see where it'd hurt out here.
You know, we'll still have to do the well monitoring and all the bells and whistles that go with the current landfill and everything, but just something we're looking at is transferring it out of the county into another county, so.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I think, I don't know, I think we should do diligence, see if, uh, see where we're at. What, what is the, is this something we, when do we have to have this done by?
Reports are due by like December. We have time.
Wouldn't hurt, you know, I guess.
You could do some checking, see if we could find some others that were interested?
Oh, sure. There'll be some interested.
I'd say we just need to find out and see where we're at. Like I said, 'cause we don't have enough budget for the first place to do this. This is something that's gonna come up every year.
Keeps, keeps it honest.
Yep, the dollar's up pretty fast.
Do you have a, uh, a level of scrutiny that you would look at?
Well...
Based on your recommendation, my guess...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
I mean, who are you comfortable with doing this? Half the battle.
Well, I mean, we can work with any auditor.
But you're saying what level you wanna go up?
Yeah, do you want an auditor? Do you want an exam?
Well, you know, we're due for...
You might have to do the audit, the guy, you know?
Well, if we can do the audits, and if we do the audit and see what's, if MISO accepts it, then we've got that on hand. I think we should do that the first year. If that saves us thirty grand down the line, maybe it will, maybe it won't, but we won't know for, till we try it. If we don't do nothing, whatever, it's gonna cost us that money no matter what then. I'd say for one year, try to see what the, that we were apples to apples. Try to get possible bids on the first year doing it this way with the electrical. Then also see what kind of bid in the future that would be doing the lesser of the audits, so... And I'd say try to get two or more bids, have a total of three bids. That'd give you a pretty good feel of what's going on.
You're very comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Probably with your diligence, I'm...
Make your report.
Oh!
The next thing is, uh, not on the agenda, but Dave's got some information from the landfill. But I wanted to make sure that Marcia was still here while the information was out.
Um, just two things of, that are pretty important in my mind, I guess. And one, one has to regard, regards to recycling. We haven't been recycling glass. Um, but come to find out at our last meeting that the state mandates that you recycle glass. So, uh, uh, we just reached an agreement with Carroll, you know, after the Howard Center closed, um, before I was on the board. They did a contract with Carroll landfill to do all the recycling. Uh, we just renewed that. And it does include, uh, glass jars and bottles. I'll just read that part and then, uh... Marcia, I don't know if you've seen that or... Okay. Um, all food and beverage jars and bottles, including all colors of glass. Example, soft drink, juice, beer, wine bottles, spaghetti sauce, baby food, pickle and mayonnaise jars. Empty and rinsed jars and bottles, lids and labels are okay. Food and beverage containers only. No mirrors, window glass, drinking glass, plates, pottery, ceramics, or light bulbs are not recyclable. So, just, uh, clear that up. So, um, all the recyclables, you know, just go into your recyclable container and, uh, they, uh, sort it out down there in Carroll. Just like they used to. So, um, I don't know if you wanna put that on the newsletter or something or website. Uh, the other thing, uh, that we're working on, um, trying to find out the cost effectiveness is, uh, just becoming a transfer station versus a full-scale, um, landfill. Uh, because in the year after next, uh, we will be looking at the costs of closing up a cell and opening a new one, which is very, very costly. Um, there's a lot of merit and, uh, a lot of, uh, cities are doing this where they just become a transfer station where we just haul it to another site. And the site we're looking at, uh, is Carroll and, uh, possibly doing that. So, just to give you an FYI on that, that that's something... Right.
I can't see where it'd hurt out here.
We'll still have to do the, uh, well monitoring and all the bells and whistles that go with, uh, current landfill and everything, but, uh, just something we're looking at is transferring it out of the county into another county, so...
Okay, thanks, sir. Lon, you're up. Any good news?
Well, projects are coming along pretty good. We got the new pickup today. Um... Scott and I will visit a little more on that storm sewer project down there. How much, I'll take him down there. We'll kinda go over how far we wanna go back. There may be some milling involved in that too right away to transition into blacked out. So, I want to keep the spin a little longer. Um... Did you get a hold of more on the dirt down at the campground?
Just called and left a message again.
Okay. So, we're still kinda, I'd like to get dirt down there before, before carmel. So, it kinda get leveled up, cleaned up a little bit. It looks kinda tacky down there right now, but there isn't a lot we could do 'cause the rain's been pushing that project back quite a bit, so, um... The Jetter project is going along real well. We, uh, have, I think, five manholes on Crescent Park to do. And then we will head out to, um, east, the east side and complete the project for the year. The thing's working better than expected, guys. I mean, it, uh, I don't know if I talked to you about cleaning the rain garden.
I, I don't know.
The storm sewers at the rain garden, they've been plucked for twenty years. It took Matt and I about forty-five minutes to go across that road. And I did purchase another cutter, which is thirteen hundred bucks. But if you tally what it was gonna cost us to clean them storm sewers or tear them up and redo them, we paid for that in one day. So, um, Ronnie Mateen's was plugged completely up. We got through that and that took about an hour and a half. And then Hummel's up here on, up on, um, the alley up there. We messed around all morning with that, with the cutters that we had. We were pulling about five gallons of sand back at a time. And this salesman happened to come through. He says, "You wanna demo this?" I said, "Well, go ahead and put it on there and see what," and it was pulling fifty-five gallons of sand back at a time. And I told, you know, and then we've just used the hell out of it since then, so, um...
Good to hear.
The, the thing is really working good, guys.
How many hours you got on that?
You know, I don't have a clue. I'm betting, I don't even wanna say, sixty maybe, something like that. I, I don't know. You spend a lot of time going to get water. And when we did that storm sewers, we hooked up the fire height and messed around, you know? That's where all your time's wasted on it, is, is, uh, getting water. But, uh, boy, the thing, it's just working great, so...
Water meters per...
Water meters going along. We, um, last Thursday, I had the guys go out Thursday afternoon and start hanging notices on people's door to make appointments. And we had several appointments made, um, for this week already. So, that's, it's going along. It's gonna take the rest of the summer. I mean, um, I think we got, I'm guessing, three hundred meters to put in yet, so...
But the electric side of things is done?
Yeah.
Electric meters are done?
I think it's going good. I mean, as good as can be expected right now. Uh, the guys have just been busy or heck, doing other things too. So, we're just kinda mixing meters in as they come. And then, uh, of course, the, uh, grass machine will be in Thursday, right?
Yes, well...
Am I saying that?
Here's the deal, is the grass machine rolls into town later on Wednesday night. Um, they have a crane, VNR has a crane lined up that offloads the machine. What they do is they, they transfer it here on a, on a semi. So, they, they come with the crane and they offload the machine and it goes on to its permanent trailer. So, this thing does have a trailer. And, uh, so it just gets placed on the trailer where then you gotta put the paddle wheels on it. And then after the paddle wheels are on it, there'll be some, some training. I think there's some dry land training for everybody really knowing about, about the machine and how it functions. And, uh, and then put it in through the water and they'll be doing some training out there on the water. So...
So, the training will be done on Thursday also?
Training's done Thursday. The trainers can still be around on Friday if needed. And we're kinda planning on that.
A lot of green out there.
I think we should put it in the parade and then do a few mods as we go around.
It should be in the parade. That'd be cool.
And install a GPS on that, too.
Yeah, that's what I heard. That's what...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I saw last night.
That'll be needed, I think.
Yeah.
John, you could drive it in the parade.
Yeah.
There you go.
Throw Tootsie Rolls out. Dipkin Lake one.
Big Tootsie Rolls.
Big Tootsie Rolls.
There you go.
I'm gonna have Lon be on that too, in case one of the guys that work there decide they don't like it.
Well, so here's the, here's the deal. So, when, when we train, we're, we're having our two guys train, okay? Plus, all of Lon's crew, plus all of the parks department. We're just gonna train everybody. 'Cause fact of the matter is Doug Doblinsky has already said he's quitting. Um, he'll, he'll be here full-time until the eighteenth. But, uh, Doug got a, amounts to a job promotion up at, uh, the turkey plant where he'd worked full-time, you know? He worked up there and then they had this fire. So, so nobody is working up there anymore, for now. But now he has been, he's got this job as maintenance up there. So, he will start working maintenance up there right away after the... Did say that he's still available to come here from like six in the morning until eleven and can, can work mornings. So, uh, we can keep, keep it running now and, but we wanna get a lot of guys trained because if we can keep, uh, maybe having to tran, uh, transfer people around to make sure we got folks available. And I would intend to, uh, still see if we can get another person hired full-time than further remain during the summer.
Otherwise, we'll have to have Gus run the second shift.
No. I think from what I've been hearing, why, that thing may be running around the clock.
Well, you know, it's, uh, we get a little concerned about that 'cause I think it could run a long time. And we quickly run out of manpower to do that.
It's, uh, that's a mess out there. It is.
Yeah, it's not much fun. There was a lot of them on the Fourth of July.
Might have put up a pool.
Might have to. That's it, Lon?
Other than the fact that during the last big rain, we had a couple pumps fail. I'm getting prices on those. Uh, one of them was a nineteen ninety-five. He doesn't recommend rebuilding that one anymore, so we're waiting on prices of the new pump.
What about John's blue light, the one little white top, that? Anybody ever gonna, I know you're busy helping, I'm just...
Selective. That's Bill.
Well, I build it, yeah. Tell Bill to go there for...
With a paintbrush?
Yeah.
Well, then, that arch that glass got broke out of there, that...
I, I had Ronnie fix it right away.
Who did that?
I don't know. It was broken, but it went over the bank. They probably got it on camera. But, uh, I had Ronnie fix it right away and he had some glass down there, so... It kinda surprised me it hadn't happened before, but, I mean, it sure is nice looking, but I mean, it's...
Do we know what night it got broke?
The night before, Marcia called me. Um, I don't remember. It was a, it was a Saturday night.
Saturday night?
It was a Saturday night.
Joyce noticed it Sunday morning when she was walking with that.
I couldn't believe he got it fixed that fast, though.
Yeah, that was a good thing. Because them wires was...
Yeah, they were sitting there.
Speaking of things that have failed, the lifeguards have failed us. Ones already quit. They show up half the time. Fourth of July, there was no lifeguards. Sunday, no lifeguards. When we ask them to do extra work, they won't do it.
Not show them.
They're no show. They're just, it's not working. They're so bad Ruth hasn't even started the new schedule. It's a lot of what we're gonna do. It just doesn't work. She's asking them to go out and clean up grass off the mini golf. One brought back, one little piece of twig, and the other one didn't have nothing in the bag.
Well, as long as we're talking about complaints, I got a complaint. I've got a people, a couple people called me about this men's club spraying water on these people going down the parade route.
Oh, yeah, that's always...
I think they ought to be, I ain't saying they gotta quit, but I think they'd be a little more choose who they're gonna spray and stuff like that, you know? Local people only. In fact, like last year, uh, at our, right at our house there, they sprayed, uh, some handicap, a whole bunch of handicap. And they were just standing there bawling and, you know, it just, that ain't good, you know?
Who's the leader of the...
Uh, Jim, Jim Wallace is, uh, he's president.
But it just needs, somebody needs to...
Yep.
And also, um...
Forces?
The second house south of, uh, store here, there's a lot of garbage there and it's really stinking. They called me and asked me if I could say something, to get somebody to take care of that, so...
Who lives there?
Uh, rental.
Who owns it?
Uh...
Ashingers.
Ashingers.
We can call them tomorrow and mention that to the owner?
I can go talk to the people who live down there too. I talked, stopped down to talk to the guy about mowing his yard and he got it taken care of quickly, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to talk, you know, we could dump the, I don't care if they put the socks in my garage, I can dump them up anyway. I mean, if they wanna put in my dumpster, I'll get rid of it. 'Cause they're not city bags. There's no way they're gonna pick them up.
That's the deal. Of course, it doesn't have them in city bags and we don't pick them up if they're not, so... But we can pick them up and charge them.
Yeah.
It's the only, don't do it for free. God damn, that bites us in the rear.
When you're talking to them, Ash and Winter have moved their truck. It's been sitting on the north side of my store for over a week.
That's their truck?
That's their truck.
We can call Denny.
I don't know. No, I talked to voice on it today. He ran a dumb rod and I still came back to it. I thought maybe it's stolen. It's got Woodbury plates on it, but it does go over them.
Huh, okay. Sure can.
Do you have a city administrator's report?
Uh, I got a few things. Um, this bathhouse, uh, working on the, with the engineer on the bathhouse, I would like to, uh, see if we can change the, the, uh, timeline for bidding that. We were gonna bid the project in August and I think there's a lot of merit in bidding this during the winter. And again, it's, it's grant related, that, that those grants, uh, REAPS do the middle of August and, and Sack County endowments do probably September, October. And you hate, you can't enter in, into any contracts before that or else the, we won't be eligible for the grants. So, what I'd like to do is, is we'll apply for this RENZI grant for the demolition cost. And I just put fifteen thousand dollars in as, as demolition cost. And then, then actually, uh, bid the, bid it during wintertime for construction right away in the spring. And I've talked to them about a completion date, but I'd like to look at, maybe mid-June as a completion date 'cause it probably is not ready by, by Memorial Day, but shortly thereafter. That way, you would maximize your grant opportunities by doing that. I know it's, uh, pushes the project back further than what we had hoped, but, uh, you know, hopefully it's, they, they get at it right away next spring and it actually pushes it back maybe a, a month on completion date.
What time next spring would they start then?
Just whenever the weather allows.
Seems like they do allow that anymore, but they could break her open and, you know...
They can do a lot of things if they want to.
Yeah, possibly if we don't have a real severe winter, then we might start things.
Well, it couldn't have been, like, this winter was about as cold as it gets for frogs and that, but...
True, yeah.
So, any motion on that or just FYI thing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, is that okay that we would do that? We'll set the bid for winter.
Yep, that maximizes our grants, so we're gonna do that if we can.
Sure.
I don't think, uh, we don't need to, or do we need to make a motion?
Hey, you certainly could have a motion. You wanna make a motion on that to...
Sure.
Change the timeline?
Change timeline for taking bids in the winter or spring.
Okay, good.
One second.
We'll call. Okay, Wolfman?
Yes.
Stanky?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, um, this, uh, this will be just a completely new thing and maybe Bill can do a lot better job of explaining it to you. We are going to be, um, we're gonna end up having to address this at some point, is the concept of net metering. And we've been approached by a, this, we've been approached by the company that sells solar panels. And it is that a resident wants to install solar panels and that they would generate so much, so much power that way. And they want to be reimbursed for the amount of power that, that, uh, that generates. Or if any comes back on the grid, they want paid for that. So, and that's all done basically through, through metering, uh, and this concept of net metering, that they, they're still sucking so much power whenever they're using it, but they can essentially be giving us some back when, when they have an abundance. And of course, they want paid as much as possible for this power that they would be giving back to us. And we would say, there's no way that we would give you a retail rate for, for same amount that you're buying it because there's so many other components of that rate other than just the power. You know, the distribution system, our, our labor, everything like that. The, the cost is substantially less, so... Um, I just want you to know a little bit about this concept of, of whatever has to happen if somebody installs a renewable energy source. And it will continue to happen, I think. We had been approached about this maybe a couple of years ago. It never came to be. But we need to, I think, be getting some policy in place about that.
I think REC does something like that though, don't they? If they, if they put up a generator out there, they'll buy the power back.
I think they're mandated to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're mandated to. But they only pay like one or two cents.
Well, we only pay what we buy for the mop, so they, they think they're gonna get back what we charged, but that don't work. We had that discussion years ago.
No, no, it doesn't look that way. They have to, they have to buy, take so much off the wind generator and then they have to buy the rest from them.
Well, they own, they own a windmill.
Yeah, but they can only use what, a certain percent of that though. They have to still use most from whoever. I don't know who they're...
Well, they get this from means.
You know? I don't know.
I don't think Walley's got any...
It's a higher rate, I think, over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Windmills are no good. Somebody wanted to buy, put a windmill in what, two years ago, wanted us to buy excess. We were only gonna give them one, one and a half cents or something, I think. If there must be other criteria.
It's your avoided costs, which means what it would cost us to buy our power. Because our power includes the substation, the trend, the, the distribution, the transformers, labor, everything.
So, we'll have to look in to see what other towns are doing with electrical outfits?
I think we can work with the IEMU. Hopefully, they've got some guidance.
By the time it's all, I mean, they might, may put a little bit back during the day, but at night and everything, all they're mainly doing is cutting their bill down. They're not trying to produce electricity for neighbors and everything.
But remember, we, we heard from the vendor who's selling this because he wants to be able to tell his customer, "I'm gonna get this agreement put in place and if you, if we generate more, you're gonna be reimbursed." And of course, you'll never generate that, but...
I know that, but look at all the solar panels. Where they gonna put them off the roof or what? All that's gonna look, you know?
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's...
I, you see some of them on houses. I've only ever seen them out in the country, but they don't look just too cool, so...
Right. There are some nice looking ones, but, yeah, it costs a lot.
Um, Larry Nipple with Cornbelt stopped by today. He said they're having some problems with, um, people not calling one call. They are putting in a, uh, I don't know how big the ad is, but it's going in the resort. This is the ad. And he said, "Would the city like to ride along with this? You know, can we tag team on this somehow and, and really try to emphasize the importance of locating, calling and locates?" This thing is really written so that it, uh, pertains to communication. It gives an example of communication. But the city may very well want to do something similar to this, say, the following week in the newspaper. And they've been working with the gas company. Maybe the gas company does something the following week in the newspaper. Try to hit it, uh, several times about the importance of calling and locating. So, it may cost a couple hundred bucks if we put in a big ad, but it's, I think we wanna continue to remind everybody of that.
We're a little hungry.
Yep, we, we got our new Public Works pickup today, like Lon was saying. It's a good-looking red pickup.
Ron wanted blue.
We didn't want blue.
That's the streetlights.
Hide behind the streetlight, they won't ever see us.
And you know, it's getting really dull and they're not shiny anymore, some of them?
No, I guess that's...
Some of them are shiny yet and some of them are just...
Some of them are shiny and some of them are just flat blue.
Terrific. We're going to get out the wax.
There you go.
Get G M out there, brother.
I heard from one of the folks on Lake Shore Drive and this deals with that sidewalk out in front of their house. And she said, "We still get bikers and walkers coming down that sidewalk in front of our house. When you come past that West Stone Pier and keep walking south, when you exit the city parkland, you exit onto private property, even though there's a sidewalk that runs through there." She said, "You know, what can we do about putting up any signage?" Or what she's really asking for was, "Would the city put up some signage there that directs people off of the sidewalk and tries to get them around to the Ice House Point Trail somehow using the streets?"
Can we just put a sign that says private sidewalk?
Private property or something.
You know, you got to think about how that really looks to people. You still want everything to appear inviting, you know? And private property signs don't necessarily appear inviting, but can you come up with something about?
But is it, isn't all the sidewalks, like if I have to, our sidewalk goes bad, I have to replace it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's, that whole thing down there is just a weird deal because your sidewalk, everybody else's sidewalk in town sits on the public right of way. Okay? So it's a public sidewalk, somebody comes walking by, they're certainly entitled to walk on by, okay? This extension of this sidewalk down there runs directly on private property.
Who paid for that?
Their own signs out.
Your sidewalk down there's a way, can't you?
They paid for the sidewalk.
I would think so.
It says walker button.
Oh, is that what it says?
Oh.
Why is one on all there? Why should they put sign up?
They don't like any more signs than we got.
Well, the only thing is, if that, if we do put a sign up like that, it doesn't make us liable, you know, more liable or whatever.
If it's not our property.
It's liable where you want it.
Just the idea is if, especially if they're coming on bikes, you somehow try to route them up to the Ice House Point Trail. But in order to do that, you're going to say, "Go up the hill, to Lake Street and go south and take a left and..."
That sounds like a billboard to me, but.
All we need is a pit bowl.
That's right. Tie them up there.
20-foot bowl, constructor.
Got one of those.
We got one of them.
Send them down there at the end of the sidewalk, they'll be able to go by.
Is that a small sign saying bikes with a narrow on it? I mean, I.
It's like a speed limit sign, they're going to slow them up.
We could certainly do that, you know, about.
I don't like, like I say, I don't like signs, but if you do, a small one.
They could put their own sign up, couldn't they? Private property?
They could, and then you run the, that's where you kind of run the risk about what you'd ever get for a sign. Because it's been done that way before. It's been kind of temporary where basically somebody threw up a sign and essentially put a barricade across the sidewalk and.
I don't remember who it was, but I know it's barricade.
You know, it's.
At that point, it's.
And it is private, they can do what they want, but we just ask that they wouldn't, you know? We want everything to be inviting.
She had talked to me about that when I was working down there and she was worried about if somebody gets hurt going through there, what's going to happen. And I said, "You know, you got liability insurance, I'm sure," you know, so.
But see, our sidewalk in front of our house, that runs east and west, see, that's not on the city. Because there ain't no sidewalk, don't go noplace.
Okay, yeah.
The whole issue is if it's inviting, there's your liability on the city's behalf.
It's inviting.
If it's inviting, then we're saying, "Whoa, that's private property." But we want to keep it inviting. You know, then you should have known or.
Can we just put a small sign about that big, says private property?
Yeah.
And then we've done our bit.
You wouldn't need that.
You don't need a great big one, just a small one. If they're riding on a bike, they might be able to see it. Looks like a speed limit sign, just because you've got a speed limit, don't mean they'll go that way.
Stop signs.
Stop signs don't make no difference either.
Non-public property, or, yeah, non-public property.
Private property ahead. Well, stay the hell out.
Constantine wire.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Passengers will be shot.
Could you make us some?
Better wear orange.
Good looking sign that just says private property and it's really only about that big?
Yeah, like a street sign size, you know?
I kind of like the idea that if it says not public.
Non-public.
Not a public sidewalk.
Thoroughfare or.
Not a bike route, no bike route?
No bikes?
Or.
Are they worried about bikes or are they worried about people just in general?
I think just people in general, but you know, one on, I don't know, I think we let them worry about it.
Not public property or.
I would just not get involved.
Let's let them sort of.
Okay, we can, we'll let them do what they want. You get.
Because whatever we do wrong.
You get what you get out of that deal because then all of a sudden there's a barricade across the sidewalk, yeah.
Well, then they won't be going in there, will they?
I guess that's true.
Well, that's what, if we're going to accept that, that's what you're accepting.
Anything else?
Just that I do plan to be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. There's city management, summer meeting.
Have a good trip.
I'm glad it's you.
We had two ribbon cuttings this weekend, Pier 25 and Donovan Pier at the bar.
Were there a lot of people down there?
There was a lot of kids. It was, we could have used more people, but it was well-attended, I thought, both of them.
AJ's never did say anything, did he?
No, I guess we haven't heard anything.
Well, I got a new back computer guy, so.
If you have any input on lifeguards, I suggest you talk to Ruth because.
We will have a.
I think we ought to just, I think.
We'll have a meeting here shortly with them. And, you know, it's, it'll kind of be an ultimatum meeting because if they, you know, if they want to work, they certainly can work. If they don't want to work.
Yeah, it's just a headache.
Was that, sorry, that was mentioned though, when they got hired, that they would.
Be doing other things, yeah.
Exactly.
And, yeah, their biggest complaint is any additional work, but the biggest one is working weekends. And that was part of the deal to start with.
You know, and, you know, we hesitated doing anything with it in the first place and just not schedule them anymore.
Because if one shows up, we send them home because you got to have two or none.
Right.
It's just not working and it's just causing Ruth a lot of trouble.
That's exactly the point.
Okay.
But if you want to hear it directly from her, I would suggest.
John Scott, who was the other ones that were?
Kevin and Renee Schmatt. They've been here before.